Welcome to the December 1st, 2025 meeting of the Ways and Planning Commission. I hereby call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is roll. I would like to note that Commissioner Ankeny, Commissioner Elg, and Commissioner Van Loy are not present at roll call, and Commissioner Severson, Commissioner Schwabey, Commissioner Plin, and Commissioner Cameron are present. Next on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any questions or changes to the agenda tonight?
No.
Perfect. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Severson. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwabey. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Pardon. Out of order. Further discussion. Forgot that stuff.
No, thank you.
Very important stuff for discussion of the agenda. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the meeting minutes from November 17th, 2025, and the Planning Commission report and recommendation of denial for required retail percentage at 401 Lake Street East. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any item on the consent agenda?
None.
I've got one. It's small. I'd like to note on page nine of the packet, line 28, I am identified as Commissioner Camerson instead of Commissioner Cameron. I did read it. Right there.
Very good.
Anything else? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the one change?
I can make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Plin. You may have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Severson. Further discussion. Never forget the further discussion stuff. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is approved as amended. Next on the agenda tonight is old business, and seeing as there is none, we will roll right into the public hearing. And we have one public hearing this evening. It consists of a variance and conditional use request for 220 Central Avenue South. We will start with by hearing from the city, which I believe is Director Sharp, and then we will allow, then the applicant will have some time to present as well, and then we will have a public hearing after that. So Director Sharp, take it away.
Thank you, Chair. As stated, this is an application at 220 Central Avenue South for a lot width variance and a conditional use permit to construct a two-family dwelling. Location is on the eastern side of town, just off of Central. Zoomed in, you can see it's just southeast of the intersection of Circle Drive East and Central Avenue South. It is bordered to the north by condominium units and apartments, and to the south by duplex and single-family homes. To the west is largely, across the street is largely right-of-way, and to the east is a mix of stormwater pond and natural wetland. The site is guided central core residential, three units, three to six units per acre, and it is zoned R3A, which is a single and two-family residential district. Actually pausing there. Within the R3A zoning district, the uses listed, or of the uses listed, two-family dwellings are considered a conditional use. We'll get into more of the conditional use standards at some slides towards the end of the presentation. The application details on their formal request is for a variance of 10.1 feet to the minimum lot width requirement, which is 100 feet wide, and the existing lot is 89.9 feet wide. There's also a conditional use permit required for two-family dwellings within this zone. As a reminder for the commission, and I'll go into this in further detail as well, conditional uses are generally permitted, subject to potential conditions to mitigate any impacts on surrounding properties or the community as a whole. We'll go through those standards in a little bit. The relevant code section for the variance is below. This is an excerpt from code showing that the two-family requires a minimum lot area of 18,000 square feet. Subject property is 26,000 plus. Minimum lot area per unit is met. The minimum lot width of 100 feet is where the variance is being sought, and the lot depth more than exceeds 100 feet. The existing conditions, I didn't go by today to see whether there was still a home on the property, but this aerial is actually from October of this year, so it is currently being used as a single-family dwelling. The proposed plan is for a two-family dwelling on the property that are attached only by the garage. There would not be access between the two different units to one another. They would be two independent homes of one another. The applicant has provide, provided a series of plans for the interior of the home. Typically, the Planning Commission and staff would not review the interior of homes for a project such as this. However, ensuring that it is actually two separate units was something that staff reviewed for. These plans are included in your packet as well, so I'm going to go through them relatively quickly, but this is the lower-level basement area. This is the primary floor and dwelling. You can see that the home was designed to appear as somewhat of a single-family home from the street, while still having the identity as that two-family home. And then they do have a second story as well, and would meet the maximum height requirements for the zone. These are the elevations that really try to accentuate what you would see from the street, so that front elevation would be from Central. The rear elevation obviously would be towards the wetland to the east. And then the side elevations, the top one on your screen would be to the west or towards the condos, and the bottom elevation that you're seeing would be to the east, so towards the single-family home, currently being used as a duplex. These are potential renderings provided by the applicant. Materials and colors are not traditionally something the city would, materials are something that the city may get into specifically with conditional use. However, colors and things of that nature, we tend to stay away from. Our design standards have complimentary color requirements, but don't get into exact colorations of a building. They also generally do not apply to single-family dwellings, or two-family dwellings, I should say, as well. The engineering department did provide a number of comments. These are included in your packet at length. I've tried to summarize them here for brevity of the presentation. The overall requirements are a tree preservation plan, grading plan, stormwater plan, an official survey, once you get to that, that'll be required as part of the building permit. And then the note that engineering has made is that the water line will need to be upgraded to a one-inch line rather than the three-quarter inch line that it currently is, but the sewer service is currently adequate for the site. The applicant will need to provide details on whether they're planning on having two separate services or not. The city does allow one shared service if they would like to. However, it is usually easier to meter two separate properties, and since they already need to upgrade to that, upgrade to that one-inch line, they'll figure that out as part of their utility permits, rather than even figure it out at this stage. Neighborhood notification and public comments process, our standard process was followed for this. We sent out the notification on November 21st. There was the city letter on November 17th, and it was sent to all properties within 500 feet. And then there's no neighborhood meeting required for a project of this nature, and then no public comments have been received formally at this point, though my understanding is that planning commissioners may have been contacted as well. Those are not formal comments directed into the city, and so are not considered part of the public record until they are done so. This will be slightly new for the commission. We, the city attorney and I have revamped the variance slide to assist planning commissioners with your review when reviewing a, or evaluating a variance. This slide and the wording was also semi-included within your packet, so that you could gain some familiarity. There are essentially two pieces that the code establishes and state statute establish for practical difficulties. The first is it in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance, and is it consistent with a comprehensive plan? If it meets those two, you go into your practical difficulties measure. One of the things that I've noticed in my tenure here is that the commission may not have been aware that you actually need to meet all of the following below, not just any single category. So the proposal must be reasonable. It must be due to circumstances that are unique to the property and not created by that landowner. The variance will not alter the essential character of the locality, and then economic considerations are not, alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. Conditional use permits, as I noted, I would go into a little bit more detail. Again, when considering a conditional use, these are generally permitted uses within that zone, but there could be mitigating factors that could be required, that the city can place on a conditional use to essentially try to mitigate any negative impacts. The classic example is if you're using a auto repair yard, they may be required to have fencing and/or vegetative screening around it to prevent, you know, the view of wrecked cars from adjoining properties. So that would be a standard condition that you would see on that type of use. The city code doesn't include any specific performance standards for a two-family home in the R3A zone, but does provide these criteria for all conditional use permits within the city. Again, compatible with the comprehensive plan, is the use compatible with the area, does it meet the code requirements, and if not, can conditions be mitigated with specific conditions? Would it affect property values? Would it affect traffic patterns? And again, would, if it did, would these, could these be mitigated with specific conditions? And then what impacts would the proposed use have on public services, specifically the water, school system, sewer? The actions this evening that staff is seeking is to hold the public hearing and then direct staff to prepare a draft planning commission report and recommendation of either approval or denial with the appropriate findings. And I'll bring up those slides for the conditional use permit and the variance as you do your deliberations. With that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Director Sharp. Questions?
Okay. I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Can you explain why a CUP is necessary in this case? Because it's zoned for multifamily, and that's what there, it's a two-family, so why do they need a CUP for it?
Commissioner Severson, Chair Cameron, that's a great question. It's listed as a conditional use within our zoning ordinance. The reason for that is not specifically called out anywhere. From experience, my suspicion is that it has been a conditional use for quite some time to ensure that if there was something negative that a two-family home could do on a lot, that it would be able to be mitigated. But it would be fairly standard within a zone such as this for it to be an outright permitted use as well.
And there's a few other duplexes along that street. Do those have CUPs as well?
So I've only been able to find, Chair Cameron, Commissioner Severson, I've only been able to find evidence of a single dwelling in the city obtaining that conditional use permit. Many of these duplexes predate some of the requirements for it, however, so they've been around for quite some time. Unfortunately, this section, well, not unfortunately, prior staff updated the city code and put it all into a table quite some time ago, rather than having individual districts each have their own code sections. In doing so, it's actually a little bit more difficult to track when some of those changes occurred. We don't have a lot of the old copies of our code to see when that conditional use came in, but as far back as the 1980s, it has been present.
Okay. And then is there a way to see what, because I know that it's the setbacks also is the other variance? What are the next, right, the variance is the setback?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Severson, that's incorrect. It's only to the lot width.
Lot width, thank you. Can you show me the next-door neighboring properties? Like how close are those next-door neighbor houses? And what would that?
So you can see the backs of the condos here, and then you can see the duplex that's just to the south here, likely not meeting its required 10-foot setback.
Yeah. Do we have any history on that one?
It's an older lot. Didn't look into, in all candidness, it didn't look into significantly the history of the property of the south. This property was a subject property. I was trying to find as much information on it as possible.
Okay. And can you, just one last thing, can you show me the driveway, where the driveway is proposed?
So the driveway is the shaded section here with access off Central. So it would go towards the north side of the property rather than the south.
Loosely in the same spot that the current driveway is in?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the home that you're saying is to the south, the single-family home? I think it's a single-family home, or was that a duplex?
It's, Chair Cameron, Commissioner Schwabey, it's being used as a duplex presently. I've actually spoke with you.
Okay. And that drawing that you just had up here a minute ago, or a photograph, shows that it is like right on, practically on the property line. So the issue that we have here is, I don't know, I guess you'd call it, the width of that lot is going to put one of those buildings right next, within five, six feet, seven feet at the most of that house. What do you think?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Schwabey, there will at least be 10 feet. This applicant is not seeking a setback variance on either side.
Okay.
And the required setback on this property is 10 feet. So any proposed home, regardless of what would occur with this, would need to meet those setbacks barring a variance.
And the neighbor to the, to the south doesn't have, has not issued a complaint or a concern or written a letter?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Schwabey, that is correct. They called to speak about the application, and I provided them with some information and did not voice any major concerns or write a letter for the planning commission and city council's review.
And same thing with the townhouses then?
Correct. They were all notified, but no public comment has been received. We'll have a public hearing in just a moment.
I'll wait then on that.
Anyone else?
I do have a question. I've been wondering what you mean by vacated. Something has been vacated here. Can you tell me where it is?
Were you referring to the vacated?
Yeah.
Where, I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure where that is.
Well, it's in your report, the property, and it says right on, one of the drawings by, okay, I can wait and ask the applicant this. It's on one of their drawings where it says that...
Oh, it's on the survey that you're seeing something?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm not seeing a vacation, but it's likely a legal notation of something that may have been vacated at some point, but still shows up in title work then.
But it's part of the lot.
Without, barring, I don't know where it is presently, so...
Okay. I'll check with the applicant.
Yeah, I'm not seeing a vacation note on the slide here, so apologies.
It shows up twice in the property description on page 32 of the packet.
Ah, I'll go to that. So then that would be within the legal description of the property itself. That means that at some point, 32, and that's flipped for some reason.
In that upside-down property description.
Yeah.
And then it's also, if you, it's on that picture as well, right on Central Avenue, scroll down just a hair, right? See the text that's coming out? It says, "Center Line of Vacated Lilly Avenue."
It's vacated. So what that would mean is the city would vacate a portion of something which then return, some form of property rights, usually roadways, drainage utilities, easements, et cetera, and then those defer to the adjacent properties. Without looking specifically into why that was vacated at the time, I wouldn't be able to answer any specific questions about it. It does not affect the variance or conditional use permit in this case, however.
Yeah.
It's like an old road or something.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioner, if you do look at that property description, at least some of it is referencing, at one time there was a little avenue there, now vacated, so it, which would, sounds like a street that was vacated at one point. I don't know that it's material to your discussion here tonight, though.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Sharp. Counselor, anything else, commissioners? All right. Well, thank you again, staff. At this time, I'd like the applicant to invite the applicant to come forward and address the commission. Please state your name and address for the record and your role on the applicant's team.
Thank you all for coming, listening to our spiel tonight. So my name is Nate Hitty. I'm the general manager of Custom One Homes, here with Todd Polifka, the president. My personal address or the company address?
Company address is fine.
5097 Wood Lane Elcove, Woodbury, Minnesota.
Go ahead.
Okay. So Alex, thank you for that presentation. You've covered a lot of things there that I was going to cover, so also I appreciate your help in getting this all out and meeting all the deadlines. So in talking about the, the project in, at 220 Central, with us being between the condos and on the other side being, being a duplex on that side, with the overall square footage and size and depth of the lot, it just, it felt like it was going to be a better use of the space to make this a two-family home, to maximize the use of that, of that lot. You know, the lot width being 89, you know, that was obviously, that would have been established more than likely long before the 100-foot lot width minimum standard was put in place. So again, to not take into account the fact that the lot is almost three times as deep as it needs to be, feels like it'd be doing us a disservice to not utilize that land space as best as possible. And, you know, the, the survey, the plans, I mean, they're, they're kind of used as a guideline at this point. We're not 100% sold on, you know, that's what the exterior absolutely has to look like, but generally speaking, that's going to be the, the overall feel of the home. In terms of the house placement, you know, we're, we can, we can move that around too as of right now. We do meet all the setback standards, so we're not asking for any of that. Our overhangs are good, they don't impede too far in the setback as well. Obviously, there'll be some, some tree removal that we're going to be taking care of there. And we did get comments from, from the public on the condos to the north. I have some comments on the trees and retaining wall and whatnot there, so we're open to having discussions about what their ideas are there as well. Terms of impervious surface, everything that we have planned meets those requirements Yeah, I think that's, those are the nuts and bolts of it, if there's any additional questions.
Thank you, Nate. Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
Do each of the houses have a two-car garage?
They do, yes.
Okay. Because the way the, the way it came across on my computer, it looked like they were about that big.
Oh, gotcha. Yep, you can see they kind of, they do have two doors, not that we're sure they'll have two doors, but they, it does show that there's two separated by a little bit, yep. Going back to the, just real quick, going back to the CUP portion of it, so we've been in talks on this property for probably two years. So those talks started with Valerie when she was in Alex's position, and she gave us her thoughts on it. I've got a bunch of emails going back and forth with her. At that time, she said that we weren't going to have to have a CUP at that time, so we were kind of going into this under the understanding that we were just going to need to do the variance. Then Alex brought up that he felt that we should apply for the CUP based on his interpretation of the zoning standard.
Okay. That's good context. Commissioner Severson, you had a question?
Yeah, what are, what's your plan for filling this home? Is it like, is it going to be sold as one unit and it's going to be two, like, what would you expect would be the typical buyer? What kind of neighbor would be moving into this type of property?
Yeah. So ideally, in a perfect world scenario, we're hoping that we can begin to market this as a two-family home, sell one, and then, and then we start construction, and as we're building it, we sell the other one. That's perfect world scenario. Regardless, we're going to start construction at some point, but in an ideal world, yeah, we'd sell into the first one, and then the second one would be for sale during construction.
Okay.
Are you asking what type of buyer, or are you asking?
I'm just curious, is it going to be sold as two separate homes?
Yes.
Or is it like, one person's going to own it and rent out the second half?
Two, two separate homes is our, is our plan.
Okay.
But either could be, either could be true.
I have a question. The lot size hasn't changed since you bought it, yet you're citing that as a practical difficulty. You, had you first considered a single-family home, and what made you change the plans and need to request a variance to a two-family or two-home?
Yeah, you're correct. You're correct. It did not change. Our plans changed with how we wanted to approach this, this particular lot. And again, upon review of the standards and the ordinances and the zoning, it seemed like it made more sense that this lot was a two-family home because of the condos on one side and the duplex on the other. Felt if, you know, if I'm a, if I'm a buyer, typically, you know, you're not going to want your single-family home in between multifamily. Not saying that's always the case, but I would say that would be a little bit of a deterrent from going with a single-family on that, on the lot.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We initially were planning for a three-unit, but based on the square footages, we weren't loving how that was laying out, so we went to a two-unit. And that was, those were the talks that we had with Val again, a couple of years ago, that that's, we didn't start the process until we kind of got a little bit of a sense of support from her in that, you know, this wasn't going to be an impossibility. So when, when we got that, what felt like support and that this was going to be something that was doable, we went down the road further and got plans done, surveys done, existing condition survey, proposed survey, to try to push this along.
So by, by making it a multifamily, multifamily dwellings as opposed to one, does that mean that each of these will probably be smaller than a single-family home would have been?
I mean, possibly, but the square footages of the home are still pretty large.
What are the, again, I can't remember.
Top of my head, I would have to even look myself, but I want to say we were somewhere with the basement, or somewhere close to 35,000 to 4,000. And this is information I used to have at the top of mind, but I don't at this point.
I mean, that's, that's two complete big houses.
Yeah, so they're, so they're, yeah, so they're generously sized as well.
Okay. I just wondered if maybe it was that with two dwellings on one lot, they would be able to be priced more in accordance with the neighborhood. The neighborhood is not high-end homes there.
Right.
They're nice.
Yep.
But they're not high-end homes and, on that block anyway.
That's correct, yeah.
Do you have, is that part of your consideration, that you could sell them for less money then? Because if you put just one on there, you're probably looking in the millions.
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be looking at that regardless, yeah. Yeah, we'd be looking at that regardless. So we haven't established what our, our budget is, I guess, per se at this point. You know, there's... You know, there's square, the square footage factor, there's the finish factor. But, but yeah, certainly, the plan was to, to not just put two small homes, we wanted them to be, you know, to fit our, our standards at Custom One, you know, they're gonna have our certain feel, our certain flair. And, and we didn't wanna skimp on the square footage, and we felt, based on this lot being as deep as it was, that we could accommodate both. We could, we could make the two-family work while still delivering a product that, you know, we felt met our standards.
And in line with the neighborhood.
Correct, yep.
Anyone else, questions for the applicant? All right, well, thank you, Nate, appreciate your, coming in, your time tonight.
Thank you all.
Now I'd like to turn to the public hearing. Before we get, begin, a couple, just a couple thoughts, public, public hearing is time for us as a commission to listen to the members of our community about the requests that we're considering. It's an important part of the process to include the public and to allow them to participate and add their perspectives as we consider the request. Any questions asked during the public hearing will be held until the end of the hearing and may be addressed by staff at that point. So with that said, I now open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and let us know if you're connected to the applicant in any way.
Hello, and thank you to all the members of the commission for the work that you do. My name is Jeff Nelson, I live at 1037 Lake Street East. That is about seven houses, or if you're walking, about seven houses away from this particular property. My wife and I moved into our home about three and a half years ago now. And over that period of time, I've realized how, because of the traffic flow in the area, there's some unique things that you may not be aware of, but all of the homes on that southern part of Central, all of the homes on that east part of Lake Street, on Wise Avenue, LaSalle, and then there's Reno, and a couple of other small side streets, but all of them, so there's more than 50 homes that have to exit that area by going right by this property. The, if you're going south, southeast, you can go out LaSalle to get to Bushway, but otherwise, there's not another way that you exit that whole area. So my main concern, if this variance were to be permitted, is that it just adds further congestion to an area where there's a lot more congestion than what I realized when we bought our home back there. I mean, it's certainly a beautiful area, close to downtown, I appreciate much about that, it's simply the, the heavy traffic was something that I had not anticipated would be the case for that area. So on the, on, like I say, on the basis of the high-traffic level and the particular location of that property, and the fact that the variance being requested is a significant variance, it's not like it's just a foot or two, but it's more than 10% variance from the current legal standard, that is the reason that I would request the commission consider denying the application. Thank you again for your time and for your work.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm gonna do this. Too tall for this. Good evening, my name is Greg Hogan, I'm at 120 Chevy Chase Drive in Wayzata. And I'm a co-owner of two of the adjacent condo units and representing Marshew Condom Minimum Association, or HOA. And I have been in contact with Nate, I, I did talk to him last week, but I, I felt that it can only be described in some photos, that you guys see what we're talking about. Our decks, when you look out on the deck of, of this property, I, I'm six foot six in height, so if I stood at the bottom of one of these decks, it's at least seven foot high in terms of the hill and the grading there, so it's been long-standing that the whole side of that property is probably buckthorn and various trees that have never been tended to. And earlier today, the comment was made, is there a house on the property? Yes, there's a house on it, Kathy Iverson, who used to be on the city council, sold this property probably two years ago, and it's been basically left for, it's been, we've had to live with watching, I mean, nothing's been tended to. There's FedEx boxes in the driveway that haven't been picked up, so. My point on that is, when you look at the property there, the one, one issue we have is we do not want any water runoff coming in the construction process, and secondly, through, if this house is built, we cannot have any water coming our way because of the hill and the slope, it's only gonna, water runs downhill. Two, and it's hard to see, but there are, right on our properties are at least three or four giant, really giant, taller than our buildings, ash-bore trees, okay? They need to be removed, I cannot access this property, and there's no way I could get a crane in the back of our property there, so if there's going to be development there, we need to remove those trees, whether they're on, right on the edge, they're, they could be your trees, they could be our trees, but they're either gonna fall on your garage, or they're gonna fall on our condo. So some tree work needs to be done, and I, I don't really think that, that tree inventory reflects the size and the, and the placement of these property, of, of those trees. So, we'd like, from a variance standpoint, if that's the request, we would like some collaboration and understanding. I think there needs to be a, a retaining wall or some rock wall, where I am, right by our, our decks, it's, it's significant height, and you can see it there, and something needs to be addressed. It isn't just putting in a driveway and, and just leaving it the way it is. It, there has to be some evidence of what is the plan there, and then two, the, the trees. And the last one to me is, given the depth of that property, and I've walked it a lot, because I had a good relationship with Kathy and her husband, I don't understand why the garage couldn't be pushed farther towards the back, and I'm sure it has something to do with the views, but you could just extend the driveway all the way down and put the proposed garage to the side there, and we're, we're open, we know it's going to be needed to be developed, because it's an eyesore right now. And, but we, we wanna work with you guys on some of those factors, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Director Sharp, do we have anybody on teams with questions or comments?
Chair Cameron, not at this time.
Anyone else this evening? All right. With that said, then, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Before we start our discussion, does anybody have any questions for staff or the applicant? The follow-up on? Commissioner Severson, go ahead.
Okay, so you mentioned that the floor plan is not part of the variance request in the CUP, so they can come back and make any changes that they want, correct?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner, that is correct, the interior plan would, other than reviewing to make sure that they're two separate units, would not be a, a standard condition that they would need to meet.
Okay, and then the lot width setback, same thing, we could grant the variance for whatever they're asking for, and they can come back as long as it's within that particular variance, correct? They can't go over, but they could go under? Like if they ask for a 10-foot variance and they only need eight?
Well, Chair Cameron, Commissioner, this would be for lot, the actual width of this lot, so in order to change that, they would need to plat and acquire property from somewhere, so it wouldn't be possible to alter, or to do less or more of this variance with this lot unless it were changed.
What they're, what they're asking for, so city code says that a two-family property has to be 100 feet wide. And so, since, since it's not 100 feet wide, what they're asking for is a variance from that piece, not from any kind of setbacks.
Okay, and then, is there any issue with the driveway being shared among two potential owners of this property, since?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Severson, no, for two-family dwellings on a single lot, it's fairly standard to have a shared driveway.
Okay.
The lot wouldn't actually be wide enough to allow a second access onto Central, so it wouldn't meet those, the standards where engineering would generally allow a second driveway access onto Central.
Commissioner Schwabey.
Based on the topography, do you see any kind of an issue with runoff during construction, or, or after the houses are built? I mean, is, is, is this new duplex going to be that much higher that it could cause a flooding problem on these townhouses?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner Schwabey, engineering would need to do further evaluation of a plan at a later date, but it is a fairly standard thing for them to do during their review process of the building permit. So at a preliminary stage like this, it hasn't been evaluated, you'll notice in your list of items that engineering and forestry have asked for, is the full stormwater protection plan, erosion control plan, grading plan, et cetera, for that to be further evaluated. But that's evaluated whether this was going to be a single-family home or a two-family home during the building permit process, rather than during the variance process.
Okay.
Variance and conditional use permit process.
So at this point, these are generously sized houses, each of them. Is it not possible to redo them a bit, rework them a bit, so that they are within the guidelines of 100 feet from each property line?
Chair Cameron, Commissioner, again, this isn't about the design of the home, it's the actual width of the property.
Physical property is only 89 feet.
Oh, I see, okay, so can you put?
It has nothing to do with the homes and the design on the lot.
Okay.
It's the use of a minimum lot width of 100 feet for that, or for a two-family home on the subject property, when the subject property is only 89.9 feet wide.
Right, and there's no way to come up with 10 more feet?
Without taking it away from a neighbor.
You're not making it.
And replating it.
Added property and a legal lot of record.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Based on what we're charged to do here, how much leeway do we have? It is required in the, in the zoning ordinance, that there, that in order to do this, there needs to be 100 feet. There is not 100 feet, do, can we override that and say, you think that'll be okay, if they go ahead and do it?
Chair and Commissioner, well, that's, that is the variance request, that's why they need that variance. Without that variance, they cannot do the, the two-family detached dwelling. So, in evaluating that request, you're gonna look at the standards that are on the slide on your screen. Those are the questions you need to ask and make affirmative findings on all of those things for that, for you to recommend approval of that variance. And then, if you recommend approval of that, you still have to look through the conditional use permit questions, which center around possible adverse effects. So you really have two requests that are both necessary for the project to go forward. The other thing I'd add is, you know, you can attach recommended conditions, and to your earlier question about all, you know, stormwater runoff and all the, the questions and, and notes from engineering and forestry, I mean, that could be easily added as a very reasonable condition, that the applicant provide the city with all information that goes to those, those questions, so those are all the pieces you're, you're wrestling with now.
Okay. There was just a spot where it talked about that our role in this as quasi judicial, judicial. So I wondered if that somehow changed the way we're supposed to look at it, but apparently not, we can still go ahead and?
No, Chair and Commissioner, that's right, yeah, this, what that means in this context is that, you know, if the applicant shows that it has met these criteria, you should grant, or recommend the council grant approval of these two requests. If, if the applicant hasn't shown those things, you know, if there's, there's one of these factors you feel that is not met, then you would recommend denial.
Cool, thoughts? Deliberations, commentary? Anybody wanna lead us off?
So I can start.
Okay.
I'm looking at the picture on page 23 of all of the other properties in that, kind of that block area. We've got the townhomes to the north, we've got a duplex to the south, these lots are tiny. They're very, very long and they're very skinny, and I would have to imagine that whatever anybody's gonna do in any of these properties, they're gonna have to ask for some kind of variance, because there's just not a lot of room there. So I think it is reasonable for them to come in and ask to make this a two-party, or two-family home. And it's zoned for that, and, you know, as you had said, Director Sharp, I don't even know why we're here, to talk about a CUP when it's already zoned for this, and I understand that, you know, having some conditions attached to it. I, I think, you know, the only thing I'm maybe getting hung up on a little bit is the width of the lot, but at the same time, the width of the lot is sort of driving the CUP as well, so I don't have, I don't have an overall issue with it, and trying to think of what kind of conditions I would, I would ask for to make it more reasonable, but I think, I think the proposal, what they're asking for is reasonable, I think the uniqueness of the property is not, you know, theirs, although they're trying to fit a two-family home on a smaller lot than maybe is necessary, but at the same time, that is what this neighborhood is, it is a mix of dense, more dense dwellings than you might find in another neighborhood.
Cool, thank you, Commissioner Severson.
Okay, well, I've been thinking about this all day.
I've got thoughts too, so.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna start at the bottom about the practical difficulties. The proposal, the application seems reasonable, and it seems like a reasonable thing to put two houses on there, particularly the way they have them lined up, where they're not even really sharing anything but garage similar back-to-back. They're not really, I don't think, gonna be in trouble regarding noise level and all that, at least it looks that way from the renderings. Well, the plight of the landowner, if he wants to have two, two homes there, it, it is a plight that, that he has, it is unique to the property, but the landlord owner in his own way is making it, because he's putting two homes on it instead of one. I don't think it alters the essential character at all, it certainly, certainly seems to fit in there. I don't know how much the economic considerations were a reason, but certainly, they're going to have a higher profit margin with two homes rather than one in that neighborhood. I think that it's gonna be really important to address what the concerns were of the people who spoke up, who live in the area, that the runoff during construction and afterwards, that this is all done through the engineering department, okay? And they would be involved in this, okay? The only other thing we really haven't discussed much is that the other neighbor is concerned about traffic. And I know there's a lot of traffic in that area, because And I know there's a lot of traffic in that area because when I drive through it, there are speed bumps everywhere. So I imagine they're there because there's a lot of traffic. I'm not sure whether it's one family or two families is going to make that big of a difference. We're not talking about an apartment building with multiple units, many units. I think it will, will add minimally to the problem. Maybe it's something that the city of Wayzata needs to look at if it's really that bad. At any rate, I can't see any reason not to go forward with this, have engineering do what it needs to do, checking all these things out, particularly the water situation. And maybe the city needs to look at how, how traffic is routed through there. So that's what my thoughts are.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwabey.
Okay.
Commissioner Platten.
Yep. I have some thoughts here. I understand the concern on traffic. Traffic seems to be an issue in Wayzata. But again, I don't know if adding one home instead of, you know, there'll be two instead of one would be it. I do know it's going to just be a lot with construction. And as far as the water runoff, yes, I think our engineering department will do an excellent job in guiding the, the project with the right water runoff and mitigation that's necessary. So that would absolutely be a condition with an approval on this. Here's that darn word, reasonable. You know, what's reasonable? Is it reasonable? Yes, I guess yes and no. The lot size here, you know, gosh. It's reasonable for one home. I think the neighborhood and the situation where this lot's placed is reasonable for two and multi. I, I understand that. That's one thing I like about this neighborhood is the transition from multifamily housing to single-family. It's got some diverse housing options for everybody. So in that regard, I, I do like this application, but I have a hard time saying that the plight is due to the lot. When the lot was purchased, it was 100 feet wide. It is still 100 feet wide. So we're trying to do something which the applicant stated was to maximize the lot. Will the variance alter the essential character? I think I've addressed that. I don't think it will. And economic considerations are really not the sole factor, though I do think it is part of the consideration. So I've got some yeses and some nos at this point. And same with the CUP. I do think it's in comp plan guidance. I'd say yes. Is it compatible with the area? I'd say yes to that as well. Does it meet the proposed code requirements? There's a no. Due to the lot width, so there's the one no. Would it propose, would it affect property values? No, I don't believe it would. And would it adversely affect traffic and other public service? Traffic, I think it will during construction, but I don't think so. And public services will be addressed by our city engineer. So I'm still kind of thinking about it.
All right.
Would love to.
Let me share my thoughts. How's that?
Okay.
Can you go back to the previous slide? There you go. So I think like, you know, starting from the top, I think I do see it in, I do see the request for the variance as being in harmony and the intent of the zoning ordinance. I think it's, I do find that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. As Commissioner Platten noted, right, there's kind of a mix of single-family and two-family homes in that area. And I think a two-family home on, you know, in that space would be, is, would be good. I, I think that what they're asking for is reasonable. You know, I know there's been, there's been a ton of development there and south of there over the last like five or 10 years. And in fact, I think it's the four properties just south of the duplex are all new homes in the last, I think they were 2018, 2019 built. So, I mean, that, and they're big houses, right? So, you know, I think that it would fit, what they're looking, what they're proposing, right, and what they're looking to do, I think would fit right in largely with the neighborhood and some of the stuff further south. There's been a ton of development down there too. You know, so, and I think that'll, I'll come back to that development piece on, on the traffic part, right? But in terms of the practical difficulties, I think the application is reasonable. I do, I think that, like Chris, or Commissioner Platten, sorry, the piece that I turn over in my head, right, plight of the landowner, they knew what they were buying when they bought an 89.9-foot-wide parcel. And if their intent was to put two fam, two, a two-family property on it, then their due diligence at that point should have led them to knowing that they needed 100-foot-wide property when they bought it. And maybe they did, and that was part of, the variance was part of the plan all along. I don't know, right? I think, but that's the one piece I think I, I struggle a little bit. I don't think at all it's going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood or the locality. And I don't think what they're looking for is, is based on economic considerations. I think, I mean, in any kind of development, I think there are economic considerations, but I don't think, that's not what they're asking for here, or doesn't, at least it doesn't feel like it to me. Onto the CUP part, I think it's absolutely consistent with comprehensive plan. It's compatible with the area. As Commissioner Platten noted, other than the lot width piece, it meets all the code requirements. They're not asking for anything. Todd, or Nate, thank you for noting the Eve's setback. And I don't think it's going to affect property values from a traffic pattern piece. I think that's where, you know, the long-term use of it isn't going to affect traffic patterns. The short-term use during the development process will. But again, I would note there's been so much development in that area over the last five or 10 years, right? I think, you know, there's that. To Mr. Nelson, your comments about traffic, my personal views on traffic in that neighborhood is a lot of it got caused, was caused when they put in that roundabout and cut off the two-way access down at?
Lake.
Lake. Yeah, Lake, Lake and whatever that cross street is. I'm going to, some friends of ours used to live down there, so. And in terms of, you know, impacts on public services, you know, I think going from a single-family house to a two-family property isn't going to impact on water sewer schools. So I, I, you know, I, like I said, I struggle with the whole lot width piece, but I, I find myself, I think, supportive of what they're trying to do and what they want to do, and I think it would fit in really well, so.
And I also really like the renderings. I think that they'll be, they'll look very nice in that neighborhood.
It is sort of tough. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you, Director Sharp, with those four, you know, newer homes in the last six to eight years directly south of that duplex, if you go to page 23, yeah, do you know if any of those needed any variances for side yard setbacks?
Chair and Commissioner, they were a specific project that came forward as one set development. They were actually platted that way and proposed as a full development. So they didn't require specific variances because they were proposed and created as part of a single development. It looks like, from looking back at it, that it was PUD-like that was established for them to be constructed.
Do you think if they were all single, like individual property, would they have needed setbacks? Or do they, so they don't meet the current code?
Chair and Commissioner, that's correct. They don't meet minimum lot width. They don't meet minimum lot depth. They don't meet minimum lot area. They don't meet minimum setbacks for sides for any of the four properties if you were to apply the standard R3A zoning district regulations.
And then now this property that we're looking at meets all of that. So their only issue is that they are lacking 11 feet from the property itself, but the, the home that they're proposing on, or the homes they're proposing on this site would meet all front, back, side yard setbacks.
Correct.
Okay. I mean, to, to me, I think that's better. I mean, I feel like that's a better alternative than having an application come in and they don't meet any of those other setback requirements than, you know, having the, have, you know, push the side yards out so far that, you know, they're, you know, you can like hand something to your neighbor next door through the windows because they're so close. I feel like that could be another option is this gets denied, an application comes back in, and they have all these additional setbacks on the side yards or the front or rear yards. So to me, I feel like this is a better option.
The other really, may I speak, please?
Of course.
The other thing that I really liked about it right from the start, when I saw the first drawings, is that they're about as separate as two families sharing a lot as they can be because there's no common walls that I could see. And also, they each have their own yard. So I guess that's not the right one to really show that, but they each have some yard to show on either side. So sometimes that little extra space makes for pretty good neighbors. So on each side, left and right, sounds, they each have their own yard. I think it's a plus.
I'd like to add a condition maybe to this as we're all thinking about, you know, making a motion one way or the other, but that they meet with their, their neighbors and talk about the, maybe fencing requirements or some privacy, you know, with vegetation screening or something to assist with the neighbors to the north. And I'm sure with the forestry and engineering recommendations, they would get, take care of the trees that are diseased, also the ones to preserve and protect, and then also deal with the water mitigation. And I know some of that's covered in the conditions. That would be, anyway, but I would just like to emphasize, emphasize that, that maybe there would be some fencing or vegetative, vegetative screening.
I think, yeah, I, I heard what Mr., kind of Chris, what you were, sorry, Commissioner Platten, what you were saying about the trees, trees and some of that. And I heard what Mr. Hogan was saying earlier about there's some trees that need to be removed and there's some question about who the trees actually belong to, but, you know, I think, I would hope that you guys would be able to figure out a way to work together on, on that, especially with equipment coming in there to, to do that, whether it's, you know, figuring out who owns the trees and, or splitting the cost on removal or, you know, whatever that takes. For sure, the ash trees and the buckthorn, right, that ash trees, they're diseased and the buckthorns, it's just a flat-out eyesore. Cool. All right. It sounds like we've got a general consensus then, do we not? Anybody want to make a motion?
I could try.
All right. Commissioner Platten.
I'd like to make a motion recommending staff to prepare a draft planning commissioner report and recommendation with appropriate findings, including the proposed requirements from staff in the engineering and forestry, along with a requirement of a discussion or, I don't know if it would be a discussion, but fencing or vegetative screening as a conditional use of, of this, reflecting a recommendation of approval for this application for review and adoption at our next planning commission meeting. And this would be for the variance.
And Counselor Dottles.
Well, Chair, yeah, and Commissioner, I, I think I would just maybe suggest that one amendment and one clarification to your motion. If you would accept that is, could be inclusive of both the variance and the CUP.
Okay.
The conditions would attach to both. And, and I think maybe just a point of clarification, I think we can work with your motion on, on that, but I, it sounded to me like the condition related to wall and vegetation on the north side of the property and meeting with the neighbor, that that condition be that the applicant meet with the neighbor to discuss handling those things. So the condition is they got to have that meeting. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's very workable and reasonable. So if you would accept those two friendly amendments from counsel?
Accept those friendly amendments.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Severson. The all-important further discussion. No? All right. I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the draft report and recommendation, recommendation of approval has amended. Will be on the consent agenda at our next meeting. And then after that adoption, go on to city council for their consideration. Thank you to the applicant, staff, members of the public for coming tonight and for your participation and thoughts in tonight's meeting. So then next item on our agenda is other items. Director Sharp.
Chair, not a lot of development activities to update you on since our last meeting two weeks ago. Snow came a little early for those trying to button things up so they didn't get quite as far along as they would probably have liked to. Our next meeting for city councils tomorrow evening. There will not be any planning commission-related items on that agenda, but the following meeting on December 16th will have your report and recommendation from 401 Lake Street East. With that, open to any questions if you have any on development activities, but no significant updates to make you aware of.
Do we have any applications for next time?
Chair, we will, yes.
Okay.
It won't, this, the next meeting on December 15th of the planning commission will likely just be this item on consent. But we will actually have an application if the applicant submits it before December 8th. So it'll be a larger review come the first meeting in January.
Got it.
So next meeting is just consent with a potential, with an item potentially for early January?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a quick question for the director. I know I brought this up once before. I'm just wondering if anything is moving on the work that we did on Wayzata Boulevard of replanning that.
Thank you for the reminder on that. So I've worked with and spoken with Hennepin County and our city engineer and public works department. The work that was done on the Wayzata Boulevard corridor, there, Hennepin County is planning on doing their work in 2030 or so. They need to come up with their plan for the corridor that we are encouraging them to utilize some of the work that the city had gone through. The next application the planning commission will be thoroughly reviewing will actually include some of the potential updates on Wayzata Boulevard. So discussions have already begun on what that means, what the infrastructure changes would be, but there isn't a formal plan adopted by Hennepin County at this part, or at this point in time. They are looking to potentially submit an RFP for that design work to be completed starting in 2026, but then the work is scheduled to take one to two years of design work and public outreach. Where the city will encourage commissioners, the city council, and residents at large to participate in that process as well.
Are they going to do it in a vacuum again like they did for Central Avenue by Lunt's there? Sorry, you don't have to answer that. My personal feelings on the matter are very clear.
To allow the citizens of Wayzata to engage significantly in that corridor study, that ultimately it is their roadway, but we have provided a lot of background work to them to try to guide them in the direction the city would like to see.
What part is theirs? All of Wayzata Boulevard?
Wayzata Boulevard from where it comes into the city of Wayzata west to around this location, I know it's.
Oh, really?
It's pretty significant. It may stop just west of Wells Fargo where it transitions to city.
Isn't it, it follows County Road 101, right?
Yep.
Okay. So that's like from, that whole section from BP all the way to Lunt's, and then it goes north.
I knew that. I didn't realize it.
Yep. There's, once you start getting to where the boulevards are at, at the center of the street, that's where it really does that transition from county to city.
Other questions?
Have we had any applications for a CBD shop?
Chair Cameron, at this time, no, we have not. There's limited locations for them to locate within town to begin with. And so while we have spoken with quite a few people, they have not secured a physical location, and therefore no application has been received.
Good question. All right. So two weeks from tonight. With that, with that said, concludes our agenda. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwabey. Thank you, Commissioner Schwabey. Second?
Second, Platten.
Thank you, Commissioner Platten. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passes, and the December 1st, 2025 meeting of the Wayzata Planning Commission is hereby adjourned.